Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting of Thursday, February 15, 2024. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Koss.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also President Clerk Soul.
We have quorum. First up is the President's report. I've got a couple of items I wanted to mention. The Village of Riverside has been designated by the Environmental Protection Agency as an EPA green power community. We previously held the number three spot in the United States for total green power percentage of total electricity consumed. Riverside, I'm proud to announce, is now number two at 74%. Seventy-four percent of electricity used in this village comes from green sources, renewable sources. We're very proud to be listed in that number-two position. This is a result of action by this village board and previous village boards, where we had the choice to opt in or out in terms of buying our electrical power from renewable sources. The last time we reviewed this, it was a difficult decision, but this board stood firm and said, "We are going to be a green community," and approved the electrical aggregation to buy our power from green renewable sources. Now, individuals can out-doubt of that, but I'm proud to say that most residents and businesses in the community have not opted out, and that's why we have achieved the number-two ranking in terms of renewables resources. I wanted to mention that for a couple of reasons. One, because it's important for people to know. But, two, I wanted to remind the trustees and the residents that what we do matters. We make a difference, and this is one example of where we, as a board, and you individually have made a difference in this village and in the world, for that matter. Upcoming meetings. February 19, the Historical Commission will meet here in this room. On February 26, Parks and Recreation Board will meet in the library. And on February 28, the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet here in this room in the Township Hall. Manager Francis.
I do not ever report this evening.
Next is residents' comments on non-agenda items. If there's any public comment on non-agenda items, now is the time to speak. You will also be given an opportunity to speak on any specific topic on our agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda. Before we read the consent agenda, I just wanted to note that I wanted to remove item I from the consent agenda, the budget document, only because that relates in part to a later discussion on strategic goals. So, Manager Francis and I thought it'd be best if we took those together. Other than that item being removed, Clerk Soul, is there... Clerk Soul, go ahead and read the consent agenda items.
Approved voucher list of bills, February 15, 2024. Approved Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, February 1, 2024. Approved Village Board of Trustees Executive Session Meeting Minutes, February 1, 2024. Review and File Department Monthly Reports, January 2024, Community Development and Finance and Community Development 2023 Annual. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes. Preservation Commission Regular Meeting, December 14, 2023. Police Pension Board Regular Meeting, November 13, 2023. A resolution appointing a delegate and an alternate representative to the Board of Directors of the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency. A resolution to change the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent for the Village of Riverside. An ordinance authorizing the adoption and publication of the official updated zoning map of the Village of Riverside. And a resolution of the Village Riverside, Illinois waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to issue a purchase order to Cook County Emergency Telephone Systems Board for the purchase of seven radios in an amount not to exceed $59,758.61.
Thank you. Anyone... Would anyone like any item removed from the agenda, any other item? Could I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda?
Motion is seconded.
Motion by Trustee Mateo, second by Trustee Gallegos. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Department Board and Commission reports. Are there any reports this evening? Departments, Commissions? Seeing none? Pending business. A, update on Groveland Floodwall. Manager Francis.
Thank you. This is a brief update at the request of President Pollock to begin having quarterly updates for residents related to the Groveland Floodwall project. Attached to the Agenda History Sheet is a memo from our village engineer, from Christopher Burk Engineering, that notes the status since the last check-in in March of 2023. There has been a new team assigned to this particular project, a new project manager, who, at the next board meeting, March 7, will be in attendance to present some of the alternative options that they have come up with as their team related to the Floodwall project. Currently, village staff, along with MWRD staff, are discussing some of those alternatives and funding options, because currently, as it stands, there... The previous project that was outlined, MWRD would have paid 100% of the local share. Now, due to cost increases, some of that share would have to be bore by the village. However, MWRD has stated that they would be open to modifying our partnership agreement to afford some additional funding. So, we're working through those different pieces, and we hope to have an update at the March 7 specifically about that funding piece as well. And also to gain guidance from the village board to ensure that you all are supportive of making this request of MWRD as well.
Thank you for the update.
Before I go to the public, any questions from trustees?
Yeah, I do have a question. In light of the dramatic increase in the cost projections, I would like to inquire about the non-structural component of this project. You know, there is a requirement that non-structural items be considered by the Army Corps, and it's not clear to me whether that was just deemed, you know, too costly as a ballpark at the beginning of the project when the costs were lower, and now non-structural might be a viable option or not. So, I'd kind of like to have that developed, and a request made for at least the preliminary required non-structural assessments to be brought back before the board.
Just for everyone's understanding by... Can you explain what you mean by non-structural?
Yes. Non-structural would be something other than a built structure by the Army Corps. Physical non-structural measures could be property acquisition, relocation, elevation of a property, you know, at a higher height, extending the foundation, putting in piers, posts, columns, piles, fill. Dry floodproofing measures can be incorporated, wet floodproofing measures. These would all be to the residences that are in the affected area, rather than putting in a large pressed concrete wall and taking out trees, you know, on many feet on either side of the wall. So, there would not really be a... As much of a visual impact to deal with. There would be no long-term maintenance costs for the village. So, I would just like that reexamined as a potential option.
If no one disagrees, I would say that at our next meeting, I would ask staff to kind of include that component in the next update.
I'll make sure Army Corps has that on their list, because that would be more of a function of what they're doing for us. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, before I go to the public? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this item? No? As noted, our next meeting, March 7, correct?
Yes.
We'll have engineers here from the Army Corps, and there'll be more specific, detailed information. In the meantime, residents, public are encouraged to contact staff if you have any questions between now and then, but I would hope that people would be in attendance on March 7 to hear what the Army Corps has to say, the latest update on the Groveland Floodwall. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, moving on. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter III of the Village Code relating to feather signs. When we directed staff to prepare this item, you'll recall it was a four-to-three vote, and we have a trustee missing, so unless someone feels otherwise, I would suggest we table this to the next meeting, where we're expected to have a full board, which would be the second meeting in March. So, does... If no one has... If someone... Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
It'd be March...
Table it until the second meeting in March.
March 21, right?
Yes.
Yep. Second? Anyone?
I'll second.
Taken by Trustee Koss. Motion by Trustee Gallegos. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none? Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Motion is approved. This item will be tabled to March 21. Item C, update on Village Board Strategic Goals Survey for Fiscal Year 2024. This is a part of our budget, and that's why we had removed the approval of the budget. After presentation by Manager Francis and discussion by the board, if we're ready, we can move to adopt the goals as amended, as may be amended, or we can table it and, if needed, and... But we will need to go ahead and approve the budget tonight, the budget document tonight. So, with that, Manager Francis.
Thank you. I'm happy to report that while this particular survey has been out for over a month, about almost a month and a half, we've received the highest response rate than in comparison to any other survey that we've sent out, based on our consultant that we're utilizing for our Parks and Recreation Study and Survey, Barry Dunn. They would note that any survey that has over 300, between 300 to 400 responses, is considered statistically valid. So, I'm happy to report that we have a statistically valid survey. And so, some of the highlights that I wanted to point out to the board are as follows. I will note that a number of respondents did skip the demographic information. However, we received enough to kind of gather where people live and some of those other items, and so that can be helpful for planning in the future as well. Some of the highlights are separating sewers and improving our annual street and sidewalk program was a higher priority than repainting the water tower. Over 70% of the respondents supported the village continuing to work with Army Corps of Engineers on the Groveland Floodwall project. Related to facilities, residents supported facility improvements and adding a community space component. However, the results were a bit indifferent related to creating a commercial slash hospitality space within the facility. Over 70 respondents support the village continuing with sustainability, resiliency, and environmental health initiatives. The last few questions in the survey, approximately 98% had skipped. However, it is important to note that over 58% support the village reviewing construction policies surrounding tree removal and replacement, and over 48% of respondents support review of outdoor lighting policies for residential and commercial properties to conform to dark sky community recommendations. And so, we did include a little bit more detail as to how all those different results broke down in the agenda packet for all of the different questions. I'm happy to answer any questions, but one of the items that we are wondering that if the board is comfortable with the list of goals as outlined, then what we would do is we would incorporate this particular list into the legislative portion of the budget document, so you'd have your own set of goals listed, and so therefore, it would be incorporated as part of the acceptance of the budget document. And so, that would be part of what is submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association. While it's not required, it's a nice addition to the budget book in and of itself. And we look at the budget document as being a good planning document for both staff, the board, and residents alike. It has wonderful material to refer to, especially when you have new individuals being on-boarded, whether it's as an elected official or as a staff member.
Thank you, Manager Francis. So, if the board's comfortable, what we'd like to get to tonight is to... Is to either accept these goals as we had previously drafted, modify them here tonight, if we are able, and incorporate those into our budget approval, budget document approval. If trustees feel more work needs to be done on this, we can keep this out of the budget directly. Doesn't have to be in the budget document. It's just... That's where ideally should be. But... So, I guess I'd start with just saying, does any trustees want to kind of summarize their takes from it, or are there specific goals that, because of the survey, you feel are more important and should be highlighted? Are there certain goals that we had created that maybe need to be deleted because residents don't care as much about that? Or something could be modified? Open up the floor for discussion from the trustees. Trustee Evans.
I was really encouraged by the responses from the residents, especially proud that my segment of the village had the highest response rate.
Were you knocking on doors?
No, I wasn't. And I'm comfortable moving forward with our strategic initiatives.
Trustee Gallegos.
I'm also fine with the way it is, and I can say we can move forward at this point.
Are you asking whether this document right here should be incorporated into the budget document?
Yes, as is or as may be modified.
Okay. I see some entries that are overlapping and duplicative, and I also see some things which are, you know, not entirely... Not a lot of things, but, you know, one thing that jumped out at me is the joint collaboration with Berwin and Harlem Avenue Planning and Zoning as a stated goal, which we might... It didn't line up entirely with the survey responses, so I don't know if we need to spend more time with this particular document and keep it out of the budget for now. I think we're very, very close, but, you know, I wasn't aware until, you know, I sat down this evening and looked at this at my place, that this was going to be incorporated into the budget.
And I... We're certainly not trying to push you in that direction, but it is an option, and but we can always redraft this and come back to it. Other trustees?
There is a fair... Not a fair amount, but there are several instances of duplicates. So, the Floodwall's on there twice. 150th is there twice. I found one other one. Give me a moment.
Staff can certainly, you know, this was all the feedback collectively that we get received from the board consolidated, and so we can certainly eliminate any duplication. As an alternative, we could certainly incorporate these survey results that are included within your packet in the legislative section of the budget document, which would outline and highlight not only your goals, but also the data that came along with those particular goals. So, either way, or it doesn't need to be included at all. Like I said, it's not a requirement. Everything else that's in under other commissions, committees, the departments, the analytics that are already meet the different requirements for Government Finance Officers Association, but I know that it was a priority to have some additional legislative items or data within that section.
I'm fine including it, and for the Berwin collaboration, we could just put "consider" as the first word. It's not committing us to anything.
Yeah, we could certainly eliminate the redundancies, because I do see that now. We missed that. And I have a hard time finding the economic development Berwin one.
Right here. It's in green. But there are some inconsistencies, too, like with the Floodwall. One just says Floodwall. One says final resolution on lobby, et cetera, et cetera. One says Groveland Floodwall, finish design phrase, you know? So, I mean, phase. So, there's... Those are not entirely consistent, and I'm not entirely comfortable with all of them being included as a legislative directive in a budget document.
So, I would suggest we... Any other comments on what... Are there any items in here that you feel, based from your survey or based on your second thoughts or whatever, that you feel should not be listed, or that you would want... Or anything that's not listed that you would want added? Let's start there.
What... I have a question. So, what do they use these... What do they use the list for?
So, as part of the review, it talks about different goals and objectives as part of your budget document. So, if you notice, under every department, every department has a list of goals and objectives and achievements from the prior year, and then every year, we update the different achievements. And so, there are a lot of these items that were in other departments for... Because those department heads or staff liaisons are responsible for those different projects for the village. And so, while it's nice and it's helpful, we can... We certainly don't have to include it. I do... I will also note that these goals, based on the data points that we've received, you'll be somewhat revisiting, not completely from a survey perspective, but when we start the budget process, because then you're prioritizing of, you know, if something is of a higher priority, and we didn't have anything budgeted in '24 for it, my assumption would be the board wants to budget for some of these items then in '25, and then having that different discussion. So, it becomes a guiding piece. What Government Finance Officers Association likes to see is that, you know, you're... You have certain goals, and you're achieving those different milestones to move towards those different goals. And some of them can be long-term, short-term. We haven't outlined it or prioritized it in that fashion, but it can be that nuanced.
For the Floodwall, you could say Groveland Floodwall, continue working with partners and provide quarterly updates to the public. I'd be comfortable with that. The Resilience Center, this is the first I've heard of it, and it's very specific, and we have four entries on the second page regarding facilities, youth center, community rooms. So, I think not being as specific and consolidating would be my preference.
I'm getting the feeling that we need to not finalize this tonight, because there's... If for no other reason than all the editing that needs to be done. So, we've got some feedback. Some of the editing is obvious, so what I would like to suggest is that we move on with the approval of the budget document without this. And... Because I don't want... There's no reason to rush it. So, I will work with Manager Francis on cleaning this up, and we will put this on the next board agenda in a final draft format, just for consensus approval at that time. You know, my whole purpose in doing this was to create a practice in the Village of Riverside, and we kind of got started late. You know, this really should be done before you start running numbers in your budget, so last summer. And in most... In a lot of villages, they do it every two years, because there's a new board every two years. Whether it's the same people or not, it's a new board, because there's an election. And so, every two years, the new board establishes their goals for the next two years. My intent was to get us started, even though it's a little bit haphazard, get us started in the practice of doing that, and kind of set the stage for really doing it right the next go-around. So, with that, is anyone anything to add to that? Is everyone in agreement with that? So, I would then just ask for a motion to approve the budget document, correct?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
I'm second.
Second. Motion by Trustee Evans, second by Trustee Mateo. Any discussion on the motion to approve the budget document, 2024 budget? Please call the roll.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Koss.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Thank you. Budget documents approved. Next item on the agenda. Let's see, where are we? Continued discussion on future capital discussion for streets. Manager Francis.
Thank you. So, this is part of an ongoing discussion of whether or not the village board would like to go to referendum again in 2024 to issue debt specifically for streets. So, for those that might not be aware, every 10 years, beginning in 2004, the village has gone to the voters to ask for issuance of a 10-year bond specifically for streets. And so, we've done this. However, most recently, there was a discussion in December by the board of whether or not to look at an alternative versus issuing debt of a permanent tax levy, because it achieves the same thing. So, as a permanent tax levy, you're saying these dollars are earmarked specifically for streets and sidewalks, and that's all you can use it for, which essentially is the same thing that the referendum debt does. And so, I've created some tables that I'm going to walk you through so that everyone has an understanding of what we're looking at. And so, the first table, table number one, walks the board through if we do nothing. So, first of all, the initial budget for this year was established on the basis of issuing debt and having that debt available for this year's street program. And just based on the timeline, we are not going to have sufficient funding to do Lionel and Riverside Road. So, we are pausing that part of the program. and Riverside Road. So we are pausing that part of the program, because you'll notice that based on, we haven't, we don't have our final numbers yet for last year's budget, but essentially if we did that, we would be at a deficit of over $340,000. So that, that project will be delayed until next year. I will also note that by not doing anything with any type of referendum debt or any type of permanent tax levy, we can't achieve our 10-year program. So that, that's another piece under table one. The next table, which is table number two, shows a 10-year issuance of debt, and it's approximately, based on our financial advisor, would be approximately 2.25 million. And so if you look at the bottom of the different projected numbers, we are no longer in the red. So these funds would help us continue our program. We would have funding for our 10-year CIP, as it is currently outlined today. As an alter-
Let me just interrupt real quick. No matter what, though, the 2024 program won't, Lionell and Riverside has to be postponed, no matter what.
Correct, because we will not get the debt. And if, if we went to referendum, we wouldn't get the bonds until the latter part of 2024.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you, it was a good point. In table three, because I wanted to give you options, right, and so you could do a 15-year issuance. You'll notice the 10-year issuance, they approximate the interest rate at 4%. 15-year interest, it would be 4.25. So you'd get more cash upfront, but you would be paying more interest. So just as a way of reference, a 10-year issuance, you'd be paying approximately a half million dollars. For a 15-year issuance, you would be paying over a million dollars in interest. That, so that, those are just interest costs. That doesn't include legal review, financial advisor fees, et cetera, for both of those issuances. But you will notice with the 15-year issuance, obviously, we are able to accomplish our 10-year program and still have funds, a pretty significant fund balance at the end of 2033. In table number four, it provides for a permanent tax levy for streets. You'll notice there's no money in 2024, because if the board elected to do this option, it would be a referendum question in 2024, which would not go into effect until '25. In this scenario, you're not paying any interest. It is important to note that both the, the bond options and also this option are property tax neutral. So it contemplates the same level of debt service or property tax as we currently have today, specifically for streets. 2024, you'd be at a deficit, which we're already aware of that, but then you start to look outward, and in 2033, you have a healthy fund balance and you're no longer paying interest. There are some other years that are at a deficit, and so that becomes a question of either A, reprioritizing some of the different projects, or B, the Capital Projects Fund would have a short-term loan from the general funds unassigned fund balance. Overall, you would be saving a half million to a million dollars in interest, whether it was over a 10-year or a 15-year period. So that is the benefit of having the permanent tax levy versus the debt issuance. So, because I like to give you options, the fifth option is a referendum for the permanent tax levy, but if you really wanted to get some of those streets done, if you still want to keep Lionell and Riverside Road to get done this year, you could have the option of issuing alternate revenue bonds. What is that? So what that is, is it is debt in which is backed by a revenue source, meaning non, either non-home real sales tax or motor fuel tax. However, if you're backing that debt for those funds, then that money is earmarked specifically for repayment, and you don't have that money to then utilize for your program, because that is your debt service payment. And so I projected that out as well, so that you could see what that looked like. In that scenario, you are paying interest, but you're getting the cash upfront to start the project while you wait for the permanent tax levy. And there are no years of being in the red.
But it's not property tax neutral, is it?
This particular scenario is still property tax neutral, because you'd have the permanent tax levy for streets and sidewalks, but you'd be issuing alternate revenue debt, which is backed by non-home real sales tax and motor fuel tax, but you'd be paying the interest.
So every one of these scenarios, except for number one, is property tax neutral?
Correct.
And number one is where we let, we pay off the bonds in 2024, we don't do a referendum, we don't, that, that temporary tax increase, or that, that tax increase from 10 years ago goes away, people save it. There's a chart somewhere, I don't know if we have that.
There is, it is on page-
People would, would save 100 to $300 a year in property tax, because that would go away. But if you look on the second page, table number one, it's nothing but red. In other words, we, we just don't have nearly anywhere close to enough money to do our road program, our street and sidewalk improvements, which, to me, that's just a non-starter. We, we can't not do streets. I mean, personally, I think we should be doing more than we already are. We're doing as much as we can, and not being critical of anybody or anything, but just saying ideally, we'd like to do a little bit better. I hear complaints about our streets and sidewalks, and I think people would, and I think it's an investment in the community too, because it affects property values, it affects quality of life, it affects public safety. So to me, table number one is just not an option.
Agreed.
The one I want to bring everyone's attention to is number four, because the whole purpose of this discussion, at least for me, is how do we get to a reliable, permanent funding source for streets and sidewalks, without continuing to pay half a million to a million dollars in interest every 10 years? And, you know, that's based on pretty low interest rates. We, who knows what the future holds for interest rates?
Mm-hmm.
If this were the 70s or 80s, you'd be looking at 15% interest rates.
But we would be locked in, though, at the beginning of our bond issuance.
Yeah, if we're, if you borrow, when you do it, yeah, you're locked in. But, but, so what I wanted to look at, this is why I'm saying this table four is so important to me, is this shows that with a permanent tax levy, that keeps everyone's taxes level, no one would see an increase, it would just stay the same. For, between now and 2030, we'd have to borrow from ourselves, just close, just moving money around, just because of the way the money comes in and, and that. But, but then, when we hit 2030, we've, we've paid back the general fund with dedicated street tax money, and from there on out, we're golden. We're not borrowing any more money, we're not paying interest. Every dime that we collect from the taxpayers for streets and sidewalks is going to streets and sidewalks. It's not going to a bank for interest payments. I think everyone can agree that's, that's a worthwhile goal, is to not pay interest, not be borrowing money. Everybody wants to do that in their household budgets, as well as local government budget. You know, if, if we did the permanent tax levy, and this table four became a reality, we can decide later on, you know, is it better to borrow from a bank or to borrow from ourselves? And the difference is, how much revenue are we getting in interest from the money we're borrowing from ourself, which is lost revenue if we're borrowing, loaning it to ourselves? So you can compare the cost of borrowing versus, from ourselves versus the cost of borrowing from a bank, and that's just a, a straightforward decision. But like I said, we get in 2030, after 2030, we get to a position where this village will, will, will be able to pay for its streets and sidewalks without borrowing and, and being able to use tax dollars in a more efficient, prudent way. So that's my spiel. We, we don't have to make a decision tonight. If we're going to referendum, if we're doing anything but table number one, we, we will need to go to referendum in the fall. We would have to make a final decision on what that question is by the end of July. I would want to do it no later than June, just in case, you know, we have, you know, gets delayed or something, we don't want to miss that, because that is a hard deadline of August 2nd or something like that, 1st of August. If you miss it, you're, you're, you're off the ballot. So, so I'm anxious to hear from other trustees. There's no action to be taken tonight. Well, if you have questions and you want to come back in two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, with more information about any particular item, we can do that. So I open the floor for discussion. Trustee Gallegos.
So I am in favor of option number four. I do like five as well, but the fact that we would have planning on this until 2033, you know, with a, with a pretty clear pathway up until then, and we know we have options, that's going to save the taxpayer a lot of money between then and now, and I think it's, it certainly is worthwhile. We don't know what market fluctuation will have later on down the road, interest rates, et cetera. We will always have roads permanently, so we might as well have a permanent tax line on our bill for this purpose.
Thank you.
So it, it makes all sense in the world. It does. And I, I thank staff for giving us these five options, outlined it. This is hugely helpful.
Yes, I'm inclined to agree that the permanent tax levy is the actually responsible thing to do. I mean, you are correct, Trustee Gallegos, that we will always have roads. And, and to save, you know, between half a million and a million dollars in interest that does nothing for any of our residents is, you know, compelling to me. I am, you know, not sure about the alternative revenue bond issuance at this stage. Is there a timeframe that is associated with that decision at all, or could we move forward with saying, you know, if enough of us are in favor of pursuing the referendum, and then decide on that piece later?
You can certainly do that. It was just another option of if we want cash flow now. It's not necessarily an option I'm advocating for, because if we're trying to make it interest neutral, then, then that option doesn't necessarily check that box.
Right. But I'm, I'm in favor of four, definitely.
Sounds like there's consensus with number four. We'll still have another, further discussion on this. I know Trustee Clarity's not here, and I want to value her, I do value her input on this as well. So we'll have another discussion well before June, when we've got the full board. I do want to say one more thing, though. You know, as we said, option number one is, I think we all agree is off the table.
Yeah.
Doing nothing and letting our streets fall apart is not an option. So either way we do it, there's a referendum involved. Now, the village cannot spend resources on promoting a referendum. We can send out informational brochures and all that, but the village cannot spend, Attorney Pickrell's listening closely here, make sure I say this right. We cannot spend resources, but trustees can advocate all they want for individually, right? And, and I, if we do this route, we would, I would hope that trustees would advocate and promote this in the community.
When you say advocate on this, through what avenues are you saying it's okay to do so?
I'm thinking when you're in your private, in your clubs and talking to your neighbors and et cetera, et cetera, you're saying-
This might hit social media-
You know, media. Yeah.
Which could be an issue, and then, of course, we're on there as individuals, and I, I don't think that's allowable, counsel. You tell me if that's- Yeah, someone pops up on, on the community page and then says, you know, this is not a good idea, and then trustees try to weigh in to, to say stuff, I don't want-
There's no particular, but social media does not, should be doing this in your private life.
Okay.
If you have, expressing something as a private individual, and you're as a private citizen, to private means, that's fine. It's when you conflate the other aspect and you get certain problems. Whether it's on social media or not is not the, is not the barometer by which that's tested.
Could it not be an issue if perhaps Trustee Gallegos says something, and then you have President Pollock opine, and then you have Trustee Koss make a statement?
Yes, you're talking about being-
So, yeah, so that is, that's really a concern.
That's a implication that I would say-
I'm sorry, I missed, yeah, so you cannot have a majority forum discussing this subject. No, you don't need to do that. I wish, that's right, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anything else on this subject? Manager Francis, anything else?
So as a follow-up action item, staff will work with Attorney Pickrell, because if that's the, the path that we're going, we'll work on a calendar, a little bit less detailed, because the, the referendum one was more nearly focused on debt issuance. So we'll work with Attorney Pickrell on a revised calendar, bring that back to the board, because we'll have to hit different milestones of making sure that the board approves what that referendum, if ultimately that's the final consensus, what that question looks like, and then there will be different public notice requirements and things of that sort.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, trustees. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the youth center and remaining facility needs. Manager Francis.
Thank you. So at the last board meeting, the board had requested that staff reach out to William Architect, Williams Architect, who completed a significant amount of work related to our facility study analysis, and started a discussion back in 2018 of what we could potentially do on village properties to address the facility needs. And based on the feedback from the board, both myself and President Pollock met with Mark Bushhouse from Williams Architects to discuss conceptually creating a proposal on behalf of the village for what the board would see as next steps. As part of that discussion, it appeared that Williams Architects does need a little bit more guidance as it relates to scope, and so that is why Mark is here this evening, to kind of walk the current board through some of these pieces, so that we can provide narrow focus, so that they can create a solid proposal for the village that hopefully then the board can approve at the next meeting. So I will actually turn it over to Mr. Bushhouse and allow him to provide his presentation and answer questions of the board.
Can you just hit that? I think so. If not, just tell me, I can switch the slide.
Good evening. Thanks for having me back. It's been a while. Good to see you all and be back here. Yes, good meeting on Monday, and I did take, I was able to listen to your last board meeting. Good thorough discussion, and learned a lot from hearing that. So this evening, the idea here is to, my hitting buttons?
I hit it for you.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that worked.
You want to move along, all right. Review very briefly the work that was done back in 2018, for anyone who isn't up to speed. I expect most of you have read that, so I'm going to move through it at a very high level on that. And then with that understanding, talk a little bit, you know, go through a little bit some ideas we're having, having met with your president and your manager, and talk through what we're hearing some of the goals could be. So this is the previous study, and at that time, these were the goals. Look at the building, see what kind of condition they're in, what is historic, understand redevelopment guidelines, do a lot of space programming with all your staff, looking at growth and change in the village, to determine what spaces you need for all your functions. Then we explored a bunch of ideas to remodel, expand, or replace various aspects of the facility. And I just did volume, that didn't do me any good. All right, thank you. So this is, you know, obviously- So this is, you know, obviously the doc, what shows what you have, you know. So obviously, this is the main town hall we're in, some additions that were done in the 50s and 2000 for police and fire. You know, it's called the youth building. We kind of tend to call it the buildings along the river, because there's a whole bunch of them, at different ages, obviously the river, the pedestrian bridge over, the library. So that's, that's what we have to start with, so next. And then, of course, we also looked at the fire station number two next to the water tank. We even did a quick look at the water tower itself, next. So what did we do? We looked at the buildings, and quite frankly, with our engineers and ourselves, as we looked at the buildings along the river, our quick conclusion was, don't save them. Now, we can talk further about that, but having done dozens of these over 30 years, you pretty well get a pretty good idea, and you walk around and look at a place like that, and imagine what that community really wants to turn this into. Is this going to be an economical ability to do that? Are you going to end up with a facility that meets your long-term goals? Again, every community is different, every outcome is a bit different, but there are patterns, and the pattern for this would be probably not. But again, always worth looking at to make sure you know what you're doing. And then, space needs, as you know, there are significant space needs problems for your fire, police, and just terrible layout. There are security issues, safety issues, we all in the report, very, very real things that need to be dealt with there. And of course, some of your systems aren't very good, and as we all know, parking is constrained around here, and no, no different here for this main facility, next. So, but again, overall driving behind the scenes here, population pretty stable, staffing expects to be stable, all your building areas, including, you know, the village hall, the buildings along the river, the added fire police, all those add up to a little over 32,700. At that time, we did the programming, you needed 52. You had about 48 parking spaces available. You really need about 62 to handle a visitor, I mean, for all your staff. And then even then, you still need a few more for your daytime visitors of six to 12. So parking's a real issue here for the site. It really does not support itself at the present time. We did a couple of quick 3D renderings of the existing facility, just so, you know, folks can, you know, are looking at, obviously, the bridge over the river, the buildings along the river, the existing building, the addition, there is some parking and drives around, and even some parking underneath the building, next. So we did a couple of concepts. One was a bit smaller, one was a little larger. They, they really were, at that time, repurposing the village, township hall, I mean, the village hall, and again, things that are off the table now. But then, they were looking at demolishing the police and fire addition and making significant changes there. Build your new police and fire, do some links to make things work together. And we did look at adding additional surface parking to the east of the, of the town municipal campus here on that wonderful little green space that, wow, it's beautiful, sorry. But then, we only got one more parking space, so we're, we're really not solving that problem, next. This is the layout of it. I don't want to spend much time on it, but again, this, it's a little less time. Am I doing something? Sorry. The parking spaces were put in here. We redid the apparatus room for the fire trucks, so they could actually have the proper distance to pull out, not be on a sidewalk immediately before they turn on their roads and go to the various calls. Still gave ourselves a parking lot for visitors. Again, at that time, we were looking at remodeling village hall zones, but then next to the fire, we put in a police zone and some connecting lobbies and parking spaces for staff and patrol, next. And then quickly, we did the upstairs, had more fire, more police, you know, trying to solve all these connections with some stairs and elevators that would connect to each other, and then we put a bit of a roof over where patrol parking, so they weren't ice, they weren't all iced up in the wintertime. And then basement, putting some more police and storage units down there in township kept their basement, and we didn't do anything under the fire station. So that was a quick, that was an idea developed then, next. And then we did a couple of quick 3D views of that, again, just massing diagrams, nothing to look at, but you can kind of see how the size and scale of these buildings, where the apparatus goes, where police was situated, next. From the, from the riverside, we really weren't improving the riverfront. These buildings are just being repurposed and reused and rebuilt. We weren't really looking at a path along here. Here's covered parking for patrol, and you get a sense of the kind of massive building that would be required to make that concept happen, next. The next one was basically do that, but now get a little more aggressive on replacing things, really try to enhance the riverfront, give ourselves some opportunity for citizens to view and access the river. And this time, we're really going to try to increase the parking spaces significantly, so we really do meet the parking needs for staff on a day-to-day basis, next. So in the plan here, we still did the parking lot off of riverside, but now this whole lot slopes down all the way across till this point when you're a full level below grade. So you'll see on a different side, we did some parking underground, and by doing that, now we have more staff spaces, a little bit better visitor configuration, and fire pushed a little closer, but still working okay with the streets, again, police next to it. And then at that time, we were looking at renovating village hall, next. And then, so here, you see upstairs, now we've put living quarters and admin for fire over the apparatus bays, a bigger, better rectangle for police to use, the connecting link to make all these things talk to each other and get around. And now here, we're covering the parking area for staff and putting a green area that can overlook the river. We even talked about maybe part of this could be built out with some community spaces, but at this time, at least it would have an overlook and would connect to a path now that would go along the river that we would add, that would connect to the bridge over the river, next. So down below here, this is that parking lot from the east, full 20 spaces underground. At the time, we were looking at detention center evidence, they work well below grade, putting some storage down there, again, township keeps theirs, but that was really kind of a key element in solving the parking, and this is a great place for patrol cars to park out of the weather, safe and secure, and they can go off to their calls and in and out without heading out the main visitor areas, which is a bit preferable for them. It also keeps them away from fire truck movements in and out of the building. So there were some, some real improvements on just vehicle access in general, next. We then, we did the same blocking diagrams back then, but in the meantime, our firm had need of a cool-looking riverfront facility. So we remembered what we had done for you, and we put in some time on our own dime here and jazzed them up a little bit for another project. So now you can see, if we followed the kind of design cues of the existing village hall, town hall, and did the fire station with living quarters above, a fire tower, some good training, a police zone, connect, connecting links, next. Little different angle here from the street, but you get a feel for how we're adding on and changing things, next. And on the riverside, again, you can see the parking lot going down. This is just the beginning of the bridge going over. We could have a sidewalk over top, maybe not, but now you see the pathway along the river beginning to happen, and it works up to the park, deck area over parking, next. So here's kind of a nice, I think of, yes, you could do a pretty nice upper-level deck overlooking the water. This is really used up by fire and police, so if you wanted to build some more here, you could do that for community spaces, but here at least, you really created quite the zone that overlooked the river and, and had, let the citizens really enjoy the beauty of the riverfront. So some things we developed, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, yes. So what do we do now? Right. So what we, based on conversations we have, understanding some changes that have happened, what we would need, want to do is go back and revisit the space program. A lot of good work's been done there. This would be a much shorter process this time, much less detailed, but what we want to do is go and revise it based on where the situation we're in now. We're going to take out the village hall and recreation space needs, because those have been resolved with some other buildings and changes you've made. Understanding you may decide to close down fire station two and consolidate their services into station one, now that you have some mutual aid with adjacent fire departments and districts, so we would need to take that into account. Any changes to police space needs? Again, there are some conversations about some zones and parts of that that may not be needed now, based on sharing of services and facilities with other communities. And again, in the last five, six years, there have been ongoing small changes in police facility design and appointments. And then also, probably the most interesting next line is to review, select, and add spaces for community-focused areas. That's where we would need some input here from the village as to what are the priorities and thoughts of what these spaces might mean? Community rooms, kitchen, food services, outdoor spaces, meeting rooms, even in any athletics you'd want to incorporate. But those are the kinds of things we would need some feedback, maybe through staff that would advise us on some of the priority items that could be looked at for community-focused uses. With that, we would now have a new space program that tells us the spaces we need, compare to those zones, the buildings that are there now, look at the site again, and then investigate the options. So we're going to look at basically two approaches, I think that's our suggestion. One is focus more on additions and remodelings to what you have. Can we reuse things? What can we end up with if we do that? How well can it function? Can it fit? What are the additions and changes we're going to have? Focus first on police and fire, to make sure we take care of them, and then add on the layer of these community-focused spaces. What does that add to it? What does that do to the concepts to add those additional spaces into it? The other approach is be willing to demolish some buildings, the buildings along the river, and even the police and fire additions on this building that were also, in the last study, we realized they weren't considered historic, at least they're not registered now. So we could look at more, more new, new things. And then again, after we've taken care of police and fire, again, add the layer back of community spaces. Now we have those bunch of ideas, we bring in some cost estimating people, really look at the budgets for all those options, price them out, and now we've got a series of possibilities, and we have the numbers that go with them to then evaluate what could happen, next slide. So, and also with that, conversations we had are, understanding there are, there are real financial constraints in this whole process, so let's look at the potential for some phasing. If that, if we do some phasing and do fire and police first, and then maybe add the community spaces later, can we do that? What could that do to spreading out the costs, and where do we end up if we do that? Next, based on how that's beginning to work out, let's just look at a whole overall project schedule. How does this thing work? How do you build it? How do you remodel it? And when do you need money? And then, as that is happening, we're really hoping the village will be looking at its funding opportunities and possibilities for the project, to see how these two can really mesh together and make something work. As part of this, understanding this community's strong commitment to engaging your public and make sure they know what's going on as best as you can, we would say one of the things we could offer is assist you in a public engagement process. There are ways to do that. We've held open houses, we've assisted in finding companies that do statistically valid surveys, if that's something you want. We certainly can do, help you with some online. People can put in comments, they can vote. So if there's a process there that you'd like us to involve ourselves with you and help you in this, we can do that, and put in some specific events and time and hours to make that happen. Also, as you can see, we could develop some exterior design options. What we did on our own dime, it was trying to pick up cues on what you already had, but if you wanted to, before you go to the community and really present the project, our suggestion would be, hopefully you've narrowed it down to basically one, a basic approach. It's new, where it's remodeled, and this is kind of the way we want to go. Then with that, if you'd like us to develop some more designed approaches, other than just blocking diagrams, we could, we could do that for you. Finally, all that could come together into a final notebook, you know, again, I say notebook, it could be electronic anyway, and you want it to be, that could be posted online as well. And with that, it would have an executive summary that would understand where the village wants to go with this project, the funding plan could be at least referred to in there or also available. And then finally, you know, having done these projects enough times, if you end up wanting or needing to go to a referendum, again, those are services, we could assist what we've done that many times with many municipalities and projects, to, again, putting information together, opening, having open houses, so forth, that you have all the data you need to inform the public. So those are some things that, that we could put in the proposal, some of the things we could wait on and not really cross, not really talk about yet. The last one, pre-referendum, we can just be quiet on that and just see how this goes and what you want to do, and not really propose anything yet till we see what we need. If you want a, like a line item in the proposal that says, if we get it down to one idea and you have us develop some concepts sort of on the level of what you saw, we could put a cost to that, if that's something you'd like to have available. And if you want a public engagement process, we could work with staff a bit and try to outline some steps that would make sense for us to include, and we could put a, a cost to that as well as an item for the board to look at, review, and choose. The ones above that, I'm suggesting those might be a group of services that you pretty much need to get to the point where you're ready to see what you have and help you make some decisions on, on, you know, which way we want to go with this thing. So, there you are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. So our, I guess our goal this evening is if the board is ready is to see if we can get to where we direct staff to work with Mr. Bushhouse and Williams Architects on a contract proposal that would then come back to this board for approval. So if you do that tonight, you're not making any commitments, you're just saying that you want to see the, the details of what they'll do and the cost of doing it. So with that, any questions or discussion, comments by trustees?
Well, hi. Thank you for coming and for the summary and presentation. I am very interested in the idea of phasing this project and predicating it all on the demolition of the existing structures besides township hall, obviously, that are on site. I think you are correct that starting from scratch with something that is energy-efficient and meets our needs is going to be very, very important. I feel, and based on a lot of the survey responses that we've received, not only through this recent board survey, but also through work that we've been doing with the C4, that the community has a strong desire to have, you know, some active-use space that faces and fronts the river. So my preference would be for, in phasing the project, that we address the public safety and administration building as phase one, but orient that towards the street and reserve the, as much space as possible along the river for the development of the future community site. Under the community center, I don't really have a good sense for how much space different uses and options require or necessitate, so I would like to see two options developed, you know, potentially, one being a multi-use community center that includes flexible places for gathering and, you know, emphasizes that, different rooms that are available for dining, small concerts, exercise rooms, et cetera, with square footage to accommodate locker showers, you know, those kinds of things, rentable office spaces and workspaces, plus all of the mechanicals. And, you know, you have the expertise to factor those in, the elevators, the stairs, whatever. I'm sure there are requirements that your staff would be more than capable of working in. Second, however, there have been some, has been some interest in having basketball courts and gyms. So I would be very, very curious to see if that option were incorporated as an alternate for the community space, what that would do, or whether there is even room for that. I think I would be curious as to whether cantilevering a portion of the police and fire building over existing parking and building up from there, so it's not just a straight flat surface lot, but if you, if you could maximize the use of space by doing something like that, I think we need to be extremely creative and have as minimal footprint as possible for the police, fire, and safety that also accommodates all of their fire trucks and, you know, and needs. So I know I'm asking a lot, but I'd like to see that kind of phased approach with two different options presented for the community center side.
Manager Francis.
So if I may, and Mark can correct me. So that's really good information, but I think that's going to be... So, that's really good information, but I think that's going to be part of this, one of the phases that was outlined of getting the different feedback of what the board wants to see as part of the design. So, the first piece would be new assessment. The next piece would be community, board feedback and potentially community feedback on the facilities. Phasing sounds like it's definitely on the table, so that should be included as part of the proposal. And so, I guess of these remaining items, would the board, is the board, is the consensus, you want a public engagement process for Williams to embark upon as part of this proposal?
I do, yes.
Are we asking, do we want to know how much that costs, or?
Well, they'll provide it as part of their proposal. So, just so that Mark and his team know what to incorporate, then for the board's discussion at the next meeting.
So, we want to ask the public what they should incorporate?
So, that'll be part of the, the process, right? So that what they're designing, ultimately, they'll do a refresh on the facility assessment. But when we're talking about community space, what is, is that? Because, you know, they have to figure out what to put, where the different boxes and square footage and things of that sort.
Now, if we want to look at the gymnasium in larger, you know, larger facility here, we would probably recommend doing some outreach and probably some kind of survey saying, here are some features we could put in here. You know, they will cost money. And therefore, you know, how high of a priority do you put on these items being in there, knowing that the village will have to, you know, fund these with tax dollars? And try to get, you know, very specific feedback to get a sense from that kind of a survey that says, you know, 42% support this feature, 68% before, you know, support those feature. If that's something you want from the community, we would be inclined to say that's the kind of survey that would give very more clear direction on what the citizens want. I will also say many communities, their elected officials say, you know, that's kind of why we're here. So, let us talk about it and think about it, maybe talk to some people we know. And, you know, you don't need to do this statistically valid survey. We can give you direction on what options you want. We want you to review and include in your space programming. So, you know, there are different approaches.
But this could be a line item that we look at in your proposal and say, now that we know how much this costs, maybe we just take this approach and do that in-house.
Right.
Whatever. We all have a menu to choose from.
Menus are, are healthy.
I do like menus.
Manager Francis.
Thank you. Just so that the board know, or is aware, Barry Dunn does and will be working with Williams directly. And so, that is the group that we have hired to handle the survey for Parks and Rec, the plan. And so, we'll be getting a lot of that data that can be incorporated as part of this process, which will be great because you'll, obviously, we received a lot of, lot of meaningful feedback from the most recent survey, more specifically about Parks and Rec that we're going to provide to Barry Dunn, and they will use that as a springboard for their different surveys. And so, it'll be nice for Barry Dunn to work in tandem with Williams on some of that feedback as well throughout this process. So then, you're not paying for duplicate services too.
I think that community engagement is always important. But we could start at a place where a vision is presented. So, I, I love trustee Marshauska's vision. And sometimes when you ask the community, you know, just blank, start from zero, you don't always get as much feedback as you want.
Those are, surveys are conducted at different points. Sometimes they are very early on just to see if there's a, a strong support for doing something. Other times, the elected officials have a pretty good idea of what kind of, you know, the general support that is out there, and then they want to get more specific. So then, in that case, they may work to create the vision with options and then put that vision out there with those options and ask people specific questions about do they support various aspects of the vision. So, either can work, since you've got a surveying people already assisting you, that's very helpful.
Any other comments, questions from trustees?
In your meeting, did you discuss the possibility of three floors? Is that on the table?
Yeah, we discussed multiple floors. I think I even heard four once. But let's just say we don't have a preconceived notion of levels. One of the things we may ask you to get going on soon is some soil borings to find out if we want to do some underground parking or other basement levels. Is the river and water tables going to be cooperative, or is that going to be a battle? So, yeah.
So, of course, police and fire, that could be one chunk. That could hold the, the bunks, the showers, possibly training. And then the other chunk, as we're envisioning it, it's not just community sites. We're going to have the meeting rooms. Riverside TV will have a studio. Will there be other staff offices required in that area or wished for for some expansion?
As it currently stands, we've been really creative for admin, finance, and community development of reworking our spaces, right? So, and it's nice that we're all in the same space. It's not great that we have office spaces in the basement, but we've got great staff and we make it work. So, if the board's directive was, you know, that space that's directly on the river, they, that you all want it to be for residents and the public, we will figure out other ways to accommodate our, our own spaces within our current footprint. Really, the priority for myself is public safety. So, police, fire, and RTV, it makes all the sense in the world that wherever their studio is, it's right off of the multipurpose room that can be utilized as a board meeting, a public space that also can be repurposed for training space, et cetera. So, I think there's a lot of different opportunities to kind of make those different pieces work. But I think overall, staff, well, it would be nice to have additional offices. We can certainly make other things work. Worst-case scenario, if for some reason we completely ran out of space over here, we could look to utilize a conference room space in that new area and then convert our conference room to a staff space or an office.
And picking up on France, manager Francis's idea here, if we did build a new, nice, large meeting space that could do all the functions that she talked about, and one of them being handling the board meetings, and the room we're in right now is in a good location to support additional office or conference room needs for, she says, no, I guess I'm done here. Okay.
It's not a room.
Okay. Never mind.
So, is there consensus then to ask for a contract proposal?
Yes.
I'm here, yes.
Any other questions or comments on this? Do you need any further direction?
So, I will work with Mark, but what I envision is it'll be broken down into phases with the different prices, and we'll engage in each individual phase. So then, the board has an option to say, no, we're going to opt out of this particular phase, but we want to move on to phase three and not do phase two. Some of it may be we have to kind of move through the phases to, to get to the finish line as well. But I would assume that once the facility update is done, we're going to work in different meetings so that Mark is touching in with not just staff, but also providing the village board an update on his findings from the facility where we're at and kind of what he needs to continue down this path.
Very good. Thanks for coming to our meeting tonight.
Very happy to be here.
Mark?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
New business, village fee review, assistant village manager Monroe.
Well, thank you. Good evening. Staff was asked by the board in summer 2023 to review building fees. We had made some changes to our process and permitting requirements. And at that time, it was, a couple of questions were raised about what our, our fees look like. It's also annual practice to evaluate all of our fees. So, typically, we will introduce an ordinance to change the fees sometime between late fall and early in the, the calendar year. Tonight, our discussion is related to permits and permit fees, ambulance fees, and a discussion related to the reinstatement of a water meter refusal fee. So, briefly, staff did connect, conduct analysis of these issues. We also surround, surveyed, excuse me, surrounding comparable communities to inform our decision-making. Overall, the complaints we hear about permitting at, at times is that costs are high in comparison to our, to others. And what we found through the survey is that while we do differ in some of the areas, the results were that we're either right on par with our neighboring communities that would be generally comparable or slightly low in some areas. It really just depends on what it is. We each have differing processes, but overall, we're fairly close. And as you come together with all the different pieces or components of, of permitting specifically, that we're, we're in the same ballpark, right? Regarding ambulance fees, the Riverside is much lower than comparable communities, and so, we'll discuss that very briefly. But, you know, upon evaluation, staff's recommending the following. So, just briefly, what is being proposed or would be brought back to you with an ordinance draft at, at an upcoming meeting would be to actually keep the base of our building permit fees the same. It's a, it's a minimum base value of $100. Our rate is 1.75% of the value of the construction. We don't see a need to change that. We are applying all the fees as, as needed. But we do have a, a piece of the code that allows us to charge $75 for plan review. Currently, it's not specific in the code as to how many times we can charge that plan review fee. So, right now, we're accounting for that as a one-time fee of $75. And what we're proposing is a $75 per hour review instead of the, the one-time fee. We do send some permits out for review, and our recently renewed agreement with the third-party reviewer is a rate of $84 an hour. So, as we're getting increasingly skilled at reviewing many of our permits in-house again, it is comparable to the amount of, you know, the total of staff time and the cost for staff between intake and processing, registering contractors, ensuring that they're, you know, making sure they're insured, routing all of the reviews, doing the reviews, addressing inspections, completing all of the work, and then closing the permits, and then doing any other financial processing. It takes several hours from even the simplest permit to more complex permits. And so, we do believe that it would accomplish our goal of covering our costs and covering that staff time. I can answer any detailed questions if you like, but I'll move on. We also want to change the language in the section about plan review to account also for zoning application reviews. Right now, again, it's, it says that it's applicable to the site plan review costs of that $75, and we just want to make sure that our staff time is adequately covered with a rate of 75 an hour. We do apply stop-work orders. So, people are doing construction that's unpermitted or otherwise would mid-job create a hazardous condition. We stop the work until they have corrected those issues. There are communities that issue a stop-work removal fee. So, we have things that we need to do, return to the site, do the inspections, process paperwork, maybe confirm with additional contractors. So, we'd like to introduce a $100 fee to remove that tag. That is the end of the request for building permit fee changes. And then the final one is related to ambulance fees. We did a survey. We received responses from four different communities, and we were projecting it here. Basically, the idea is that we propose as staff a rate of $2,200. It was closest to a flat, kind of at the flat $100 for an average of what is being charged by other communities. Since the publication of the agenda, we did hear comments for suggestion of moving the amount closer to maybe $2,000 or tiering the structure so that there's a different rate for our Riverside residents who are already covering some of that ambulance services cost through their, their property tax payments and non-residential cost. So, it's really up to the board what, what and whether we would like to make a change. We haven't made a change in the last six years. And then the final item is the question of this water meter refusal fee. We're about two-thirds done with our first round of water meter exchanges, and we expect that we'll finish that probably towards the end of this year. So, come early next year, we're going to be doing our second pass of requests to work with residents and, and commercial properties to exchange the meters. And in the past, when we had changed the meters over to the automatic readings, we had instituted a fee either per billing cycle or per month for those that refused on multiple occasions to change their meters over. It takes us staff time to drive around the village at this point and do those readings, where before, we had to actually enter the homes themselves and do the meter readings. And so, we were accounting for that. So, the question from Public Works is whether we want to reinstate a section of the code. We have an example of, of what that had been, and, and we prepare that for you next time. So, I have just a couple of questions to work through and, you know, ask any questions of you. But just generally finding out whether the models proposed by staff would be acceptable to you, or if you have recommended changes that you would want to see to either the building permits, the ambulance fee, or the water meter rates. Leave it to any discussion. I have just a couple of questions in the packet. Yep.
Is that it?
No, I have two, I have a couple more. So, just as, one of the questions that the board might consider is whether we should absorb some costs of building permitting at the expense of the general fund. Community development operations and all of our building inspections are run out of, out of our general tax revenues. And so, we're trying to run it a little bit more like a, an enterprise fund where we're using the funds that are paid for the services provided. But if we would reduce the funds or not charge that plan review fee, we'd end up potentially subsidizing a greater portion of a permits than, that we would otherwise. Another question is about the, the ambulance fees. So, if there's a desire to take an incremental approach or tier, tier it in that residence structure, we'd like you to consider that. And then, just the reinstatement of the water meter fee. So, those, those couple of big questions for you. So, any changes to permits, ambulance fees, and then the water meter. What would you like to discuss?
Trustee Evans.
I was really shocked by the jump in the, the flat rate for, for the ambulance. There were no justifications or rationale for the significant jump, even for the most advanced service, transport. It was like over $1,000 more. So, is there a deficit somewhere that we need to increase the cost to help offset some?
Yeah, it's Francis.
I can answer. So, typically, we receive, so the numbers that you see before you, so we have an older survey from 2020 and then the most recent data. And so, typically, our insurance, not our insurance, our billing company will provide us with schedules and information related to what the insurance is willing to pay. And so, we have different hardship items carved out within the village code about if, in hardship items carved out within the village code about if individuals are unable to pay. And so we implement that, about whether or not we balance bill to residents and things of that sort as it relates to the fee. So by not adjusting the rate, you are actually leaving money on the table that the insurance companies would have provided, the Village of Riverside. So that's first and foremost. Secondly, while the general fund may not be at a deficit, so to speak, there's other funding sources that are funding both our medics and, don't forget, our capital equipment, which also you can consider facilities as part of that piece. And so in consideration of that, ambulance, the cost of purchasing an ambulance has gone up substantially in comparison to where it was six years ago. So if the fees were adjusted, you could also do a carve-out for a capital contribution specifically for whether it's medics quarters or for paramedic equipment. So those are some options, but just being kind of fiscally prudent of, we don't want to necessarily leave money on the table that we could recover from insurance costs.
Okay, yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
Also, regarding the meter, the water meter reading, I totally understand that. I was just wondering if we did implement the $300 charge for billing cycle? Well, how would we roll it out? So would we give residents like three months? Or, I mean, I think that three appointment request is kind of an odd way to, to manage it. So wouldn't you want to give them a certain amount of time? Like by July 1st, you have to have your meter done, or you're going to start being charged $300 a month?
I believe that, that that's the intent from Public Works. So they would provide with those letters a deadline for them to at least contact us and set up an appointment for scheduling, right? So if, it's a repeated effort that is either dismissed because they don't want to change the meter for some reason. If they are ignoring it, not receiving it, we want to make sure that we're providing plenty of time for us to assess that they are refusing the meter exchange and not just by circumstance. So, you know, my understanding from Director Tab was that, yeah, there would be a deadline, and then we would do our best to fulfill that exchange as soon as we could.
And additionally, what we could do, and if I'm recalling, the, the previous meter program predates me as finance director. But it was actually, the fee was somewhat implemented when I was finance director. And it was, we had switched out the entire village, and we had, I think it was maybe 20 individuals that just would not allow us to come in and switch out their meter. And so a suggestion would be so that the board is comfortable that if, as of the end of this fiscal year, if we've changed out pretty much everyone, and we're just following up with those other individuals, then that would be the point in which we start instituting it. Because then it would kind of create a clear break of, we've done all the meters that people have allowed us into their homes, and now they're making an active decision to either A, ignore our calls and notices, and so B, we have to do the process manually, which there, there is a cost to the village.
Okay, so we're not at that point yet?
Well, if the board is supportive, we would want to get this codified, because we also want to put residents on notice that, you know, we anticipate that all meters should be installed by December 31st, 2024. And if yours isn't, then you can be assessed this additional fee. And so then we're giving residents sufficient time, too, to plan accordingly. That's not to say, so let's say we get a call on December 15th, and someone is out of town. You know, we try to work with residents. And so if they're like, you know, I'll be back in town on January 10th, can someone come out then? You know, obviously, staff will, will use some discretion in that particular respect. But if someone's saying, I'm not going to be home till June of 2025, well, then that, that becomes a little bit more problematic.
I just want to add to anyone that hasn't had their meter changed, or they're hesitant to have their meter changed. I just would like you to know my experience, which was for staff to come and spend literally five minutes making the change and leaving. It was very not intrusive at all.
And I want to be clear, too, that this additional fee is not punitive. It's because if you don't get your water meter switched out, it costs us more. And so it's only fair to the other water users that you be charged extra because you're costing the fund extra money. Not trying to punish anyone, we're just saying that, hey, if you want to keep your old meter, you're going to pay more because it's going to cost us more.
There are additional considerations to also consider just about the water meter processing. So with the new meter installations, we can accomplish the meter readings on the same day and process all of that. There is a movement for all of the residents to be billed for water being due on the same day. And so the differential between old cycles where people have to make manual reads of those accounts means that people in the finance department have to spend additional time processing those bills. And the same goes for not using the lockbox. It's, it's the same type of issue where we're doing a more intensive, out-of-the-way process for not using the, the base systems that we've set up for everyone.
So is there consensus on the water meter, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then the ambulance fees?
Yes.
Consensus on that as well?
Yes.
For the flat rate of, as proposed, do you want that $2,200? Do you want something different or different rates for residents versus non-residents or?
If I may, I did speak with Director Buckley on it. He did recommend that if you do, so if you notice, we have, you know, ALS, ALS2, BLS. One suggestion that he had was if, for non-resident, you have one rate across the board versus the, all the different ALS, BLS. So if you're saying $2,200 for non-resident and $2,000 for resident, that would make it easier and more streamlined for billing purposes.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Very good.
And then building permit fees?
I'm, I'm fine with, with the way that you had set them up, leaving them mostly the same.
Yes. Yes. It, it's really just accounting for the amount of time that we are, are spending to do all those things I listed. When you look at a basic level of permitting, we're really spending that 75 to $100 for all the intake and end processing. And then you have inspections on top of that. So some permits come in under, some permits come in over in complexity, and we're trying to just account for the amount of time we're spending.
I'm fine with staff as well.
Makes sense.
Does staff have the direction you need?
Yes. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments on this before we move on? Trustee reports, are there any trustee reports this evening? We do not have a need for executive session this evening, so I'll ask for a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
Motion is made.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second by trustee Coss. Roll call, please.
Trustee Marcheska?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Coss?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.